I'd like to call this meeting to order. So Prescott City Council Voting Meeting today is Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. And just a few announcements, there are comment cards here in the back. If you'd like to speak during the regular agenda, please fill one out per agenda item and you will have three minutes to speak at that time. Full house today, welcome everybody. Beautiful day in Prescott, Arizona. Great day to be inside, no, it's a better day to be outside. But anyway, thanks for being here today. We have a great agenda and look forward to getting through this today. So we have invocation by Rabbi Jessica Rosenthal with Temple Berth Shalom, and then I will lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, the Jewish people of the Quad City area and around the world have just celebrated Passover, a holiday that celebrates freedom and retells the Exodus story found in the five books of Moses. The Book of Exodus contains the story of Moses who helped to free the Jewish people from enslavement. Moses led them on their journey and brought them the Ten Commandments, helping link them to their Creator and empowering them to become a sacred nation. As I ponder the deeper meanings of this holiday, I offer these words of blessing. God of history bless our city council representatives with the inspiration and insight of Moses the Shepherd. May you partner with them as they build our community in God's image with holiness and compassion, so that our greater Prescott area is full of justice and mercy, kindness, and peace. May you be blessed with the dedication and foresight of Moses the Wise, who learned to grow along with his journey and never gave up. May you be imbued with the fortitude and imagination of Moses, observer of the mysterious burning bush, and be inspired with sacred intent to achieve meaningful change. May you lead us to a time when neighbors embrace and each community thrives in the spirit of Moses the Uniter and the Bringer of Freedom. May you generate liberty and equality. Source and shelter, grant safety and security to the Quad City area. Let the light of wisdom, miracles, and humility shine brightly in the halls of power, and may you, like Moses, be a beacon of hope for every neighborhood, every people, and every individual. And let us say amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Rabbi. Let's call roll.
Mayor Minghorelli.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ora is excused. Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Six are present.
Thank you. Let's start with proclamations.
The first proclamation is National Service Recognition Day, April 3rd, 2018.
Is there some folks here to receive this after the fact? Sorry, we didn't meet last week. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a National Service Recognition Day, April 3rd, 2018. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of American character and culture, and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation cities are increasingly tuning to national service, volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas national service expands economic opportunities by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and by providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities to those who serve. And whereas the national service represents a unique public partnership and invites the community solutions and leverages non-federal sources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Now therefore, I, Greg Minghorelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, do hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2018 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourages Prescott residents to recognize the positive impact of national service to our community, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to our communities.
Hi, I'm Jackie Blanco. I'm serving with United Way of Yavapai County. National Service Recognition Day is an event to recognize and highlight the work of national service members. And Prescott is our honor to highlight the impact of AmeriCorps, AmeriCorps Vista, and other national service projects in tackling local problems, and thank you, and thank national service members for their commitment and services to Yavapai County.
I'm Rebecca Wood. I'm in AmeriCorps Vista, serving with Prescott Unified. Arizona Serve currently supports 21 AmeriCorps state and Vista members in our area who each serve on a specific poverty relief project with a local organization. Some of these partner organizations include Northern Cares, Boys to Men Mentoring Network, West Yavapai Guidance Clinic Foundation, Prescott Unified School District, United Way of Yavapai County, Yavapai Community Education Services Agency, Yavapai County Community Health Services, The Launchpad, Yavapai Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and Yavapai Casa for Kids Foundation. Thank you again for City Prescott, City Council for the tremendous honor and supporting our national service members.
Thank you. You're here.
The next proclamation is National Bike Month, April 14th through May 18th, 2018.
Come on up if you're, should come on up if you're wearing a bike jersey too.
Sure. That makes sense. Come on up. You know who you are.
I would've worn mine, but I didn't have a tie to go with it, so. All right. Well, it's my privilege to be here with y'all to offer this proclamation for Bike Month. Whereas National Bike Month was established in 1956, and whereas Prescott is a bike-friendly city, and whereas Prescott celebrates bicycling and other recreational activities by hosting many outdoor events each year in April and May, whereas some of the scheduled events for this year are as follows: April 14th, Prescott Circle Trail Distance Running; April 14th, Arizona Mountain Biking Competition in Pioneer Park; April 21st, Earth Day and the Granite Creek Cleanup; April 27th, 29th, Whiskey Off-Road Mountain Biking Races; May 5th, Whiskey Row Marathon; and May 18th, Ride to Work with the Mayor. Now, therefore, I, Greg Minghorelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby proclaim April 14th to May 18th, 2018, as Prescott's Bike Month, and encourages residents and visitors to enjoy the many outdoor amenities Prescott has to offer. So I want to present this to Bill here, and it's good to have him with the Bike Ped Traffic Committee as the chair here, and he'd like to share a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the council and the mayor, as well as the previous councils and mayors, they've been very supportive for really improving the biking situation here in Prescott, and that's reflected, that commitment's really reflected by the fact that last year, for the first time, the City of Prescott applied for, through the League of American Cyclists, a bike-friendly program, and in fact, it doesn't happen very often, but our city actually was accepted at the bronze level for the first time that we applied. So that's, it's a great reflection, there's a lot more to be done, but it's a great start. And again, it reflects all kinds of folks that are involved. City staff has been very, very cooperative with us as well, so we couldn't be happier. I'd also like to thank the members of the community here, of course, who are out on our roads riding, and very importantly, obeying traffic rules and being courteous to road drivers, because the key to the success here really is everyone getting along, sharing the roads with cars and bikes, and really, courtesy is really what drives a day for both sides. We understand on bikes, we're not going to go as fast as a car, so let the cars go by. If there's any, kind of, there's a law, stay away three feet. The law we use though, is the law of physics, and the car always wins. So it's very important on the bikes, be visible and be predictable while you're riding, so we think that's important as well. You heard about some of the events going on in the next month, there's, and the cool thing about it is Prescott's facilities here are so broad, so there's a race in Pioneer Park, this, in a couple of weeks coming up, this being rather, then the whiskey mountain bike races, more on the south side of the town and the trails, and then on the 5th of May, there's also a javelina stampede way up on Iron Springs in Emmanuel Pine, so it's just fantastic, all the facilities we have here. One last thing I'd like to mention, this Thursday at 5:30 at Grant, where, Grand Mountain Brewing Jim? Yeah, okay. Prescott Alternative Transportation is putting on a meet and greet for folks that are interested in any kind of cycling. The committee members will be there as well. For you folks, because our committee's just, really just formed a couple of months ago, we're looking for public input on things you think we should spend our time on as well. So, again, thanks for the proclamation, and thanks to everyone around the City of Prescott to be really, really embracing cycling. Thanks.
Very well.
The first presentation is the 2017 Annual Rodeo Update.
I thought JC was gonna do all the talking. He's delegating, I like that.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us here. So in 2017, the 130th Annual Rodeo, obviously many of you saw, we had just an awesome rodeo. And we can show that with the ticket sales for 2017. We're, you know, at 36,000 more than 16, and I'll talk a little more where we're going in 18, but it's, definitely the increase keeps coming, so. We're proud of, three years in a row, Best Historic Western Rodeo in the True West, Best West Magazine. Road to Rodeo attendance, 2016, we had five sellouts. 2017, we had, we called six sellouts, we had four at 100% and two over 90%, which gets us well on the way to being a sellout. We had representation attending the rodeo from all 50 states, over 17 major cities. What's really cool is international representation, is of course, our northern and southern, Mexico and Canada, but the UK, Austria, Japan, and many, many more, as you can see up there. And that's just wonderful to have those folks know that being in Prescott for this World's Frontier Days rodeo is, is the place to be. Received last year on July 10th, the declaration from Paul Golser, basically complimenting the rodeo. And that brings us to PFD Support and Investment, which I'm sure you all want to hear about, and it kind of gives you a breakdown, which I'm going to touch on a little later, as far as how we get to these numbers, and some of the projects that we have worked on this last year and years past. Again, USA Today, must-see festivals in all 50 states, there's the Prescott Frontier Days World's Oldest Rodeo. So community investment, at Prescott Frontier Days, we rodeo, we give, that's our motto. And you can kind of see going through there, some of the list of some of the folks that we give back to the community each year. Year-round Economic Engine, we're looking at over 80,000 visitors to the Prescott rodeo grounds, and between the fair and the rodeo, and we have many, many events going on. Based on some of the figures that I've heard, with a two or three-day event, with some of the downtown events, I would guess that what we do year-round is probably in the 20, $25 million economic impact to the city. Of course, we got a lot of, a lot of heritage, a lot of, a lot of tradition at this rodeo. The Shires have been coming here, JC tells me since about 2005 or 2006 each year, and that, with the Shires, and they, they want to come back every year, it's not, we don't have to ask them, they want to be here, along with many other folks. So we got some joint, joint things that we've worked on together. We got to go back and absolutely extend our thank you again for the facelift, for the grandstands, electrical, the plumbing. I don't think there was a visitor, a fan, or spectator that didn't make some comment about how comfortable it was, what a great experience they had, whether it be at the rodeo or be at other events. And for some of the things, then you see the 700 tons of new arena sand that PFD did a few years ago, that's one of the things that was in that breakdown of investments. Of course, thank you again for the long-term lease that, that made a lot of this possible. And we can't thank you enough for the arena lighting. Those LED fixtures made a big difference in cost, and, which is obviously good for the environment too. So, we're looking at future projects, we want to get a permanent skybox at the east end. We bring in those grandstands every year, it's about, with the restrooms and the grandstands and the coves, about $35,000, $40,000 a year that we continually rent each year. We're working on ways and drawing some plans up to see if that, see how that's going to work. Doing a lot of painting and refreshing of the whole facility out there, and of course, y'all just completed with your staff, the renovation, or kind of the facelift of the cowboy, cowgirl bathrooms. And with that, I just want to tell you guys how pleased it is to work with Joe Baines, McFinnick, Public Works has been out there, your staff is just top-notch, great people to work with. So that's some of the stuff, renovation, you can kind of see up there in the, in the top, where you see the beginning, and of course, you see the finished product. And JC tells me that since he's a kid, he hasn't seen those bathrooms touched.
I think that too.
So, and they, we did put in a drainage pipe, which you all approved earlier this year. That pipe's been extended, making more of the grounds more useful to us in different ways. So, and we've improved some of the vendor electricity, vendor areas. Some of the things that we've done over this past, kind of in 2017 and on into 18, is that top two pictures are the Freeman Building. The Freeman and the Dock Pardee were two of the original stone buildings there on the rodeo grounds. That had a beautiful wood floor that, over the years, had been, gotten pretty rundown. We had the floor completely refinished, and all the fixtures changed to LED, which bottom corner there on that, that concrete floor, we pulled the carpet out of the Mackin Building and stained the concrete, and turned that into a nice-looking building too, and we're going to, in the future, look at LED fixtures in there. Excuse me. On the west end of the grandstands, last year before the rodeo, we also put in the stairs, which makes it a whole lot more comfortable for people trying to get to their seats, and of course, it improved the safety of the grounds too, as far as if folks did have to get out of there, have to evacuate, we had another, another way for them to go. So with that, you know, last year was, we lost Harry Vold, and while JC probably won't say this, him and Harry were inducted into the Hall of Fame together in 1994, and we're lucky to have JC as our general manager since 2004. That's a blessing for this rodeo. So I'm going to let him talk about last year's rodeo and this year's coming up.
All right. That sounds great. Mayor, Councilman, City Attorney, City Manager, I'm glad to be here, folks, I'll tell you. You know, we had a great rodeo this past year. 130 years of rodeo, isn't that unbelievable? That any organization, or any city, or any local sponsors would keep going for 130 years, and we're pretty proud of that, I'll tell you. Last year, we had over 600 professional rodeo athletes, we paid out $238,134 last year in prize money. We had every current world's champion, and every top 15 cowboy from around the country. Of course, we had the Harry Vold Rodeo Company, and we have a long-term contract with them as we do with the city here. And by the way, you know, a long-term contract like that really makes it easy, a lot better for us to plan things out a long time ahead, and I know, in the future, all our grandkids and whatever, will be enjoying the rodeo for a long time. So let's look at 20, the 131st rodeo this coming year, 2018. Our board got together this year early in the year and decided to add 2,000 in the event to our prize money, putting it at 15,000 in the event, and putting our total, the added money that Prescott Frontier Days adds is 125,000. And then, of course, the entry fees go in on that, and that's how you get the big prize money, but we're really proud of that. You know, the, the way to keep getting these top cowboys, and of course, breaking records in ticket sales and whatever, of course, which is the improvements with the rodeo grounds, and of course, that prize money makes a giant, giant difference, for sure, and that's because of all our local and national sponsors that make that really happen. So we're looking for a great rodeo this year. We're going to run from the 28th of June to the 4th of July. This year, our parade will be on June the 30th, and Randy Corley, our rodeo announcer, is going to be the grand marshal. Last year, he was inducted into the Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame as an announcer, and we thought it very appropriate that we would honor him as our grand marshal of the Prescott Frontier Days Parade. Again, I'd like to thank all of you for all the support we get, and we'll keep our working partnership working good, and this rodeo will keep on living for a lot longer than we all will. Thank you.
I don't know if y'all have any questions, but the one thing, we did get word the other few days ago, that the Pro Rodeo TV is coming to Prescott on July 3rd and July 4th, so our event will be televised. We're also part of the Wrangler Pro Tour, which is only 22 rodeos out of the great many there are, so. I don't know if y'all have any questions or not, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And thank you JC for giving Chris that moral support up there, appreciate it, so. Always good to hear from you guys, thank you.
The next presentation is Introduction of the Arizona Philharmonic.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for having us. I'm Fred Fort, a former board member of Chaparral Arts, and one of the many supporters of the arts in this town. My role here is to introduce our orchestra spokesman. She is the former Nevada Ambassador for the Arts and current Prescott resident, and one-half of the Grammy-winning musical duo Captain and Tenille. I'm pleased to present Ms. Toni Tenille.
Thank you so much, Fred, for introducing me, and to Mayor Minghorelli and the members of the council, thank you for giving us this time to talk a little about, about our dream for the arts, to add to the arts here in Prescott. And I want to give this to Maureen.
This is for all of the council members.
Thank you. It has a lot of information about what we're trying to do. I'm trying to see how many people in the council and in the audience were born after 1980, because, because if you weren't, you wouldn't have a clue who I am, but, let me just tell you really, really quick about my background and why I feel that I can talk about what I believe this will be a wonderful thing for Prescott. With my now-former husband, but we're still friends, Daryl Dragon, we were Captain and Tenille, we had many, many, many hit records from 1975, starting with Love Will Keep Us Together, and then probably our last number-one hit, which I wrote, was Do That To Me One More Time in 1980. Yes, a little subtle song there. So, anyway, I also want to say that I had 10 years of classical piano, I am classically trained, and then for over 20 years, I performed the great songs of the '30s, '40s, the '50s, which we call the Great American Songbook, with symphony orchestras and big bands all over the country and in Canada. So I really have had the privilege in my career to work with the finest musicians you can find in this country. One of the reasons why Daryl and I decided to move here to Prescott from northern Nevada was because it was beautiful. We came, one day, somebody said, "Why don't you look at Prescott?", because we lived in Washoe Valley. We lived in Washoe Valley, Nevada, which was, we got about 6 to 8 feet of snow every year, so we were looking for a place with a little less snow, although we loved it. And friends of ours said, "Why don't you look at Prescott?" I went, "Where's Prescott? I've never heard of it before." But we looked it up and came to see it, and in, in one day, we just fell in love with it, bought a piece of property and moved here in 2008. And both of us still live here, in different places, but we still live here. I was attracted because of the fabulous arts scene that was here in Prescott, also the hiking and the, the climbing, which I did all over the Sierras for years, the rodeo. I'm so happy to be here with all of you, because I enjoy it every single year. Yay, I hope you keep going another 130 years. But anyway, so what we, what we thought, when we looked at the Prescott scene with these great musicians that we have retiring into this town, living in this town, that what we thought would be really special is what we had in Reno, which was the Reno Philharmonic Orchestra, which was a superb quality, top-quality orchestra, so we could attract stars from everywhere who wanted to come and listen to someone perform at the symphony orchestra. Let me tell you why it's important that we have what we're looking for with the Reno Philharmonic, I mean Reno, no, with the Prescott, Arizona, there we go, Arizona Philharmonic. We are looking for an auditioned professional orchestra. We have some wonderful musicians in this town, but they don't do it all the time, they have other things that they do. And having studied classical piano for so many years, I know how difficult it is to do what they do, and how hard the work is to get to the point where they are. As a professional artist guesting with symphony orchestras like the Pittsburgh and the Cincinnati and so forth around the country, one of the things that attracted me to go to certain orchestras was the fact that I knew that when I took my music and put it down, they only saw it once, they never saw it before my first rehearsal with them, they could read and play that music like you read the paper. It just was amazing, and plus the fact that it took one rehearsal for me to prepare for a 90-minute concert. I didn't have to spend a lot of time exhausting myself, especially the age I am now, I was younger then, but still. So I knew that I could come in, I could get a great rehearsal with a great orchestra, and then I could rest, and the next day I could give a fabulous concert, and knowing that they were there behind me doing that. We can do that in this town. This town, this orchestra, as we put it together, the Arizona Philharmonic, we're going to start modestly, but we're going to get there, will be, in my opinion, the crown jewel of this magnificent little city that we all love so much for the arts. And we just wanted to let you know that we're getting started, we're very excited about it, and I'm very happy to answer any questions that any of you may have in my limited time, so we don't want to spend more than five minutes. So, no questions? Really? Not even about Muskrat Love or anything like that?
No, I just want to say I used to go to sleep with you often at night, as well as the captain, I hate to say that.
Oh dear, oh no, we won't mention that. Well, thank you, that's very, very sweet.
Love you guys.
Thank you so much, and we love Prescott. In fact, I did take, two years, I left two years ago, August, and went to Florida to finish writing my memoir, my co-author was there, and had a sister that lived there, and I was born and raised in the South, so I thought, well, maybe I'll stay. So I bought a little house there and finished the memoir, and then when I got done, and we promoted and everything, I went, "I got to go back to Prescott. I have to go back." I was only there for two years, so almost two years to the date, I drove right back here to Prescott and picked up where I left off. This is a town full of everything that I love, and also people that I love. There are the most wonderful people in this town, and I made friends here in the years that I lived here, that are lifelong friends that are in my heart forever, and that's why I left Florida and came back here. So, I hope I've covered, did I forget anything, Robin? Nope? Okay. Thank you so much for allowing me this time to talk to you, and we'll fill you in more as we make more progress with the Arizona Philharmonic. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your Thank you so much. Thanks for your investment in our community. Appreciate it.
The next presentation is Fire Operation 101: Invitation and Overview.
Well, first off, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. With me today, I have Captain Birch, uh, who is kind of the planner and organizer for Fire Ops 101, and Ben Rochay, who's also representing local three-zero-six-six from the Professional Firefighters Association. Once again, you've all been, received your invitations, but I wanted to make sure for our community awareness that there's some general awareness as to what Fire Ops 101's all about. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Captain Birch.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm visiting you once again regarding Fire Ops 101. I'm just putting it out there, an open invitation, as your schedule is allowed, to stop by and visit the program. It is hosted April twenty-seventh from five-thirty P.M. till about eight-thirty in the evening, and that particular evening, we put everybody in their PPE, so to speak, about forty pounds worth of stuff, the air pack. We get them breathing air and make sure that everything fits right for the big day on the twenty-eighth. Um, on the twenty-eighth, scenarios begin at nine A.M. and conclude about fourteen-hundred, and if for any reason you can't come, I would suggest coming just for the barbecue alone. Um, it's gonna be quite exceptional this year. Um, we're doing a slight demonstration in the morning for the participants relating to modern fire attack, and relating directly to that is synthetics and everything that are in homes these days cause multiple flashovers. So, along those lines, we're just doing a demonstration that morning about seven-thirty or eight, so if you're available, please stop by and visit. Um, can I field any other questions about the program for you folks?
I can tell you I did it in two thousand and seven.
And?
And I won't be back.
Okay.
When they put me on granite rocks in the dells and wanted me to go off backwards, I thought that was the end of me, so I would suggest anybody that hasn't done it, what a trip. It really is a lot of fun.
It really is a great, great opportunity to, um, what I, what I believe much of us have discussed here today is why we're here in Prescott. I landed here over twenty years ago, started my career in the fire service. Um, I, I can't think of enough of the area that we live in, and I speak to realization when we talk about this particular program and, and, and just relating to it directly between Prescott Valley and here, and how we go about facilitating emergency services to everybody with our IGAs and mutual aid that we, you know, uh, obviously operate under on a regular, uh, daily basis. Does anybody else have any other questions? Um, it's hosted out at our training center at ninety-six-zero-one Valley Road in Prescott Valley this year, so hopefully we'll see you there.
I don't have a question, but I do want to thank you for your service.
You're very welcome.
You know, you guys, you never know if you're going home on a given day.
All I can tell you is that I'm already worried about the weather on Thursday when I go back on shift. I'll leave it at that.
All right, well, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you again, Mayor, members of council, and, uh, just, just kind of follow up. This has been a joint effort now at least of probably five or six years or beyond, and, and it's really a good effort, uh, as far as the coordination, and we exercise this through, uh, uh, no use of general purpose funds, so I think it's very critical. It's all through volunteerism, so with that, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
The next presentation is the Mayor's Commission on Ecological, Cultural, Historical, Heritage, and Outdoor.
If you're on this commission, ECHO, please come on up. Councilwoman Scholl, you want to join me? As they're coming up, it's, uh, very appropriate to kick off this mayor's commission after we've heard from, uh, Arizona Philharmonic, as well as the, the Bike Committee and others today. We have a very rich, uh, rich resources here in Prescott, and we recognize that. And, uh, Councilwoman Scholl and I, a few months ago, started talking about all the great assets that we have here in Prescott, and how could we better leverage and coordinate all of those assets in our city for our residents, but also for those who come and visit, uh, because we know we have a lot of those tourists that come in. And so, uh, we talked about it, and, uh, Michael Lamar had a great suggestion that he brought from Georgia, at least one good thing from Georgia, and that, uh, was, uh, this commission, uh, which we call ECHO, which is Ecological, Cultural, Historical, Heritage, and the Outdoors. And so, uh, Councilwoman Scholl's done a great job helping put this together. She's found the, the right people in our community that represent these different areas, and I really appreciate her help. She's gonna come share the mission and a few other words.
Thank you, Mayor, for your support on this project. This project kind of stemmed from thinking about, uh, past commissions and possibly the, uh, addition of an open space commission, how that wasn't really something that we needed right now in Prescott. And so, we tried to kind of broaden our approach, and how could we incorporate more, more topics than just open space, and so that's really where this stemmed from. And so, our purpose for this commission is to improve and highlight the city's unique and outstanding ecological, cultural, historical, and outdoors attributes. And so, when looking for members for this commission, we really tried to appeal to a broad range of people. So, we have Manny from the Smoke Eye Museum. We have Jim Holt, who is very familiar with the Prescott Active Management Area. We have Reagan, who owns the Hyde Shack. We have Dennis Gallagher, who has been really instrumental in, in understanding our heritage and history here in Prescott. And we also have Scott Neese, who's familiar with performing arts. And so, we tried to get a broad range of people to help us capitalize and highlight the great resources we have in this community. Um, so, thank you, Mayor, for your support on this project.
All right, I think at this time, we're gonna do, administer an oath to these guys, and then we'll thank them for their upcoming service.
So, before we do the oath, if you could please go out to the lobby after the oath is completed to pick up your packet and to sign your oath for our record. So, please see Cindy out there. All right, so, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I stand.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
And defend
And defend.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
And laws
And laws.
For the state of Arizona
For the state of Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them
And defend them.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially
And impartially.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of the mayor's commission
Of the mayor's commission.
On ECHO
On ECHO.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So, I do affirm.
So, I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please make sure you go outside.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank 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 you.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Uh, anything anybody would like to pull from this consent agenda? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items Eight A and Eight B.
Second. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes six-zero.
Turn her off.
Turn her off.
All right. Uh, let's move on to, uh, item number nine, ordinances, consent agenda. Anybody want to pull? Go ahead, Maureen, I'm sorry.
Item A, Adopt Ordinance Number Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-Sixteen-Fourteen, authorizing the acceptance of a public utility and drainage easement from Granite Property Investments, LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Consent Agenda Item Nine A.
Second. Have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes six-zero.
Okay, let's move on to, uh, item ten.
Mayor and council, item ten A, Special Events. We have five of them. The first one is Approval of a Series Fifteen for Party in the Pines, and that will be June second, twenty-eighteen, four P.M. to ten P.M. Number two is an event Mile High in the Sky Balloon Festival, and that will be June sixteenth, twenty-eighteen. Number three is Play It Forward, Saturday, June sixteenth, twenty-eighteen. Item four is the Annual Campaign Kickoff Event, and that's Saturday, se- excuse me, September thirteenth, twenty-eighteen. And the last one is the Mountain Artists Guild and Craft Show and Wine Festival, May twelfth and May thirteenth.
Okay, entertain a motion on that.
Mayor, I move to forward Special Event Liquor License Applications, Ten A-one through Ten A-five, to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes six-zero.
All right, let's move on to, uh, regular agenda, item eleven A.
Award City Contract to Fan Contracting Incorporated for the Samaritan Way Road Reconstruction Project.
Mark's always got your back.
I know. That's where he sits right there. Thank you. Um, Steve Oros, Public Works, uh, this first item, uh, today is for the reconstruction of a portion of Samaritan Way, um, as shown in the larger picture at about where this T is. It's just south of, um, Willow Lake Road. Uh, it started a couple of years ago, or actually, uh, sometime, uh, last fall, uh, one of the drainage grates, uh, broke, and, uh, the structure below it, uh, created a safety issue. Uh, we also observed at the same time, the pavement in the area had deteriorated, uh, abnormally quickly. So, what we've been doing over the last few months is we did some geotech, uh, evaluations and found that there's a significant amount of moisture under the surface. Uh, the drainage pipe was working fine, uh, however, the structure around it, uh, came apart. So, uh, the project is to reconstruct the road, uh, address the underground drainage, uh, and create a more stable surface, and put everything back better than what it was originally. We did procure this through the Job Order Contracting process. That's, uh, the state has put together, um, Fan Contracting is a local contractor that's on that list. There are several others, but, uh, they're the local one. Uh, we did review the cost with the state. They do have fixed pricing, but the pricing that, uh, we received from Fan on the project was consistent with other projects that we've done. Uh, also in this, uh, contract amount, uh, is a contingency amount. Uh, not knowing exactly the extent of, uh, the underground, uh, surface issue, we've estimated on the high side that if we had to replace the whole project area full depth, because the soils are so bad, that the contract will cover it. The way the Job Order Contracting contracts are set up is that they don't normally have a contingency. However, we feel on this one that we needed to add that to make sure we don't have to come back again. Um, not that we don't like being here. Uh, Word of the Contract hopefully will be today. Uh, Notice to Proceed will be Thursday, and we want to get this completed, uh, by mid-May, uh, well in advance of any monsoon rains, and, uh, if there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Steve. Questions and comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Steve, I understand this Job Order Contracting Program is relatively new. Can you describe how it was created and how we, uh, were able to select local contractors to participate?
Okay. Uh, good question. Uh, the Job Order Contracting Process has been around for a number of years. Uh, last year, uh, the state put together a statewide Job Order Contracting, uh, Program and broke the state up into a number of regions. And, uh, Yavapai County is in a certain region that had a number of contractors pre-approved to do work in this area under this program. Fan Contracting is the local contractor. There's, uh, I believe four or five other firms out of the valley and around the state that are also on the list. Um, we, we do look at each contractor, each project, to see how we can make the project work, and, uh, Fan Contracting, this one, was the, uh, one of choice.
So, it's a combination of, uh, quality, performance standards, and competitive bidding?
Uh, that is how the state contract program was put together. All the contractors have pre-approved pricing with the state. Uh, a local contractor here doesn't necessarily have a huge advantage over an out-of-the-area contractor, because they've adjusted their mobilization, other factors, to make a more of a level playing field. However, for a smaller project, firms just have, uh, a bigger challenge going distances, even though they are pre-approved in those areas. Uh, we're, we will be looking at some of those other firms for little larger projects that make sense for them to mobilize and come up under this type of program, but for smaller projects, we, uh, usually look at the local firms first.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the public understands that this is, uh, really a competitive, um, bid environment, and it's not a, you know, individual, single-source, or no-bid type of contract.
Correct. It is. All the, uh, bid prices are set up through the state as part of the program. There's a third-party, uh, company that monitors all the, the bidding to ensure that the prices are what, uh, they said they were when they were pre-qualified, uh, for the program, so we feel very comfortable with, uh, the pricing that we're getting.
And with this program, we should be able to, uh, catch up on some of these larger projects that we haven't been able to, uh, complete in our annual, uh, budgeting for Public Works?
In some ways, yes. In some ways, no. Uh, the Job Order Contracting is the, uh, a delivery process. They, it does have a, a cap on the project size of a million dollars per project, that if you're over that, you can't use this program. So, when we have a project that comes up, say, in an emergency, something like this, where we didn't count on having the grate break and the, the road come apart, uh, so quickly, that we could utilize this program to not only design it in-house fairly quickly, but also get it delivered very quickly.
Right, so you can respond and then, uh, get the project, uh, completed in a, in a shorter timeframe than without it.
Correct.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, the project would have taken probably two more months if we had gone through the traditional, uh, bidding process.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, Steve, thanks for your great explanation.
Thank you.
And Phil, thanks for asking that question, because we like transparency. Um, I like to try and keep our money as close to home as possible, so this looks especially for smaller projects and realizing the parameters that have been set for things a million dollars plus. Um, thanks. I really appreciate it.
Sure.
Other questions, comments from the council? Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number Two-Zero-One-Eight-Dash-Two-Hundred.
Second. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes six-zero.
Thank you, Steve. Let's move on to, uh, item eleven B.
Approval of Amendment Number Three with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated for Design and Other Engineering Services for the North Washington Avenue Churchill Street Reconstruction Project.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to make some preliminary remarks on this. Uh, this was initially on Consent Agenda, and I asked it to be put on Regular Agenda, because as the council sat last summer, there was a lot of discussion about value engineering and rightsizing projects. This is the result of the rightsizing of a project. Um, we are spending thirty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars to have Civil Tech Engineering redesign the North Washington Ave Churchill Street Reconstruction Project. Civil Tech Engineering's redesign is saving us two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over what we were budgeting initially last summer. So, I just wanted to bring an example of us rightsizing back to you, so you knew that we were taking that seriously, and we're doing that.
Good. Councilman Good?
Well, I just wanted to compliment you on that. I mean, if this was gonna be a, nearly a four-hundred-thousand-dollar project before it was looked at and redesigned, that's a, uh, from a percentage, uh, savings, that's remarkable.
Substantial. Thank you, councilman.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to amend City Contract Number Two-Zero-One-Five-Dash-One-Eight-Six-A-Three.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes six-zero.
Let's move on to item eleven C.
Off Resolution Number Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-Sixteen-Thirty-Six, approving filing of severance and transfer application with the Arizona Department of Water Resources by Arizona Echo Development, LLC, to transfer three-hundred-and-seventy-five acre-feet of Granite Creek's surface water rights from Granite Dell's Ranch to the City of Prescott Water Service Area.
Representative from AED, you wanna... Or city attorney, you want, have anything to say?
I can, I can preface this. Um, the city has a-
The city has a obligation to provide Arizona ECO with 375 acre feet of surface water from, from the flow of Granite Creek, which is basically water stored in the lakes. This resolution is, sort of starts the process to allow Arizona ECO to sever and transfer those surface water rights and convert them to potable water. The most important thing to the city on this is section six. And I encourage you, if you haven't read it, to read it. It basically says, nothing, nothing in this resolution guarantees that the 375 acre feet of surface water translates into any assured amount of potable water. That's a whole different, that's a whole separate process. So lest anyone think that, you know, say 375 acre feet of potable water will be, is being transferred, that's not the case. This is simply the severance transfer portion. The 375 has already been well-established. The water, those surface water rights are well-established. This, this allows Arizona ECO to start the process with SRP, to then go through the process with Arizona Department of Water Resources.
Okay. Councilman Lamerson?
I just want to thank the attorney for explaining that because surface water is not the same as the water we deliver. We deliver treated water, which comes at a cost to the citizens differently. So, thanks for that explanation, John.
Other questions, comments?
Mayor, I do have one speaker card.
Okay.
Leslie Hoy.
Do you have your timer there, Maureen?
I do.
So we have three minutes, okay?
Afternoon, mayor and council. I feel privileged to stand here at the same podium that the person who was in my, I can't remember. Tony Tenille stood there earlier. Okay, I have a question about this item. If the severance transfer takes place and if Arizona Echo is annexed and the 375 acre foot, feet goes to the city, will that amount of water be recharged and then pumped from the city's wells? In which case, it would be groundwater at that point? And if so, will it be pumped at the airport well or in Chino, at the Chino Valley wells?
I have to address that. It actually, my understanding is it's not groundwater, it's alternative water, right? Because we're recharging surface water, so it's not historic groundwater. The mechanics of all this, again, that's why I think it's important to focus on, from the city's perspective, section six. The mechanics of all this happen later on. The severance transfer has to go through the whole process with ultimately DWR. And what that looks like at the end, we don't know. But, you know, the, there's, the 375 acre feet of surface water has long been established and this starts the process to get the answers to those questions.
Yep, fair enough. Go ahead, Leslie.
Okay, well, I believe that it, we aren't gonna, we're not gonna use surface water for the subdivision. So the chances are that it's, I mean, it's pretty certain that it's going to be pumped groundwater. So that's just a point that needs to be made, even though that they are bringing the surface water rights. So I hope we'll all understand at the time that we need to understand that exactly what's going to be happening to the water.
I tried to explain that using the attorney with regard to the 300 and some acre feet of surface water doesn't translate into 300 and some acre feet of potable water. This starts the process to figure out
Right.
the number, okay? We don't know what that number is going to be yet.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No, mayor.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Well, I understand that this is not an obligation on the city for the development plans of the developer, but he needs this transfer in order to begin the process of his development plans. Now, should those not end up working to his expectation, is this rescindable?
Well, the the resol, the resolution, again, is, it, in theory, the resolution is, could be rescinded by the council. Once the process is started, and I defer to Mr. Geese. I think, once he starts the process, he can, I believe he could stop it at any time. But once the severance transfer is approved, then I don't think you can undo it. So, and I'll, certainly with the mayor's permission.
Yeah, just let us know who you are and where you're coming from.
Mayor, members of the council, Jason Geese. 923 East Curly. So the answer to the question is, and let me back up just a little bit because I think it'll help. I spent about two years working with SRP in order to establish that the priority date on the water right is the first priority on Granite Creek and therefore predates water rights on the Verde River. And so when we, when we talk about the right, it's an excellent water right and it's been proven up. I was thinking about talking loosely there, but by, by the premier or largest water utility in the state, the one that certainly we have to deal with regularly in Yavapai County. The next piece, as John said, is for us to move forward two ways. One will be the actual application for annexation of the property. We're finishing the legal descriptions for the application at present. I hope to have it done next week. And then we enter the public process officially. Second piece of it, then, is a parallel course with ADWR. So we're filing with the state to sever the water right from the lake, transfer it to City of Prescott's water portfolio, and then be serviced back water through a water service agreement into the future, assuming that the annexation is approved. And so as it relates to Councilman Good's question, the, it's a sticky one for me because I can't let the water go to Prescott without an annexation. So if the annexation is approved, then the two would be, they're not mated together, but they're certainly, they run parallel course so that everybody, us, the city, the citizens, understands that at the end of the day, it's a package deal. Because we certainly won't let go of the water right should, should we end up not being annexed into the future. So I'm going to anticipate for you that the way that the development agreement would need to read is that assuming successful annexation, we would need to be locked in to move that water to the City of Prescott if it isn't already in position to do so. The reality of it is, is we have two timelines that, based on my experience, I know I can control. So you, you start the process, you wade into it, no pun intended, and you, you see where it takes you. Because the annexation will have a life of its own and I'm sure that it's safe to say that the severance transfer will do the same. And we'll have to coordinate at the end, once we kind of see the status of both matters. Does that help?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I understand it's a necessary first step.
And, and I think the last piece of history is SRP asked us, they said, well, where do you intend to go with the water? And so Prescott is a designated water provider. And so our intent has always been to annex into Prescott. And, and then SRP asked us if we could get a resolution through council so they would see that Prescott was open to that possibility, is the way I'd phrase it.
I just want to make sure the public understands that the city has not become obligated based upon accepting this.
There's, there's zero obligation. Yeah, I have no problem reading that into the record. There's no obligation here. There's going to be a, it's a series of months and many, many meetings, public meetings, as we wade through the process on both fronts, frankly. They both are governed by state statute and then also city code. So it'll be very lengthy, frankly, lots of detail and lots of public meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geese. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mr. Geese.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for wanting to work with the city. I would much rather have your piece of property in the city built to city standards, city codes, directly adjacent to the city, using things that benefit the city as a whole, rather than have it in the county, Prescott Valley or Chino Valley or some other place, right next to Prescott. So I just want to make that public. I appreciate you looking at working with the city.
Thank you, and, you know, we've, it's taken a long time to get here. But part of the reason has been that Prop 400 creates a much higher bar for us versus alternatives. And so we're excited by the possibilities and we think that this piece of property belongs in the City of Prescott.
Other questions, comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor? Move to adopt resolution number 2018-1636.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes six zero.
Okay, let's move on to item 11D.
Award city contract to VSS International Incorporated for the FY18 Pavement Preservation Project.
No.
Michael's not going to bail you out again.
I only, I only pinch-hit once a game. That's the rule.
Thank you. All right. My name is Steve Oros again, Public Works. And the item before you today is one element of our pavement management program, pavement preservation. Kind of want to describe the program and then get into the specifics on this project. The pavement preservation is one of the elements of the pavement program. The other two major ones are pavement rehabilitation and reconstruction projects. Another element of this, in the pavement preservation, the whole goal of it is to cost-effectively keep good streets good, very simply put. The preservation techniques are dollars per unit. We look at, one of the questions we have is why do we choose this street over that street? We look at traffic volumes, roadway classifications. Basically, the higher volume, the higher level of service on the roads, the ones we want to keep good, we focus on those first, not to the ignorance of other streets, but we focus there first. We also look at the roadway's pavement quality index, or PQI. The higher the ranking, the better the street pavement is. It gets to a certain point and then it starts to need rehabilitation, which is tens of dollars compared to dollars on the order of magnitude. And then we design by driving around. We look around, we see the streets, we travel, we look, we get input from residents calling saying the street's not up to the standards I'd like, can you take a look at it? We do see where it is on the pavement quality ranking, what's going on in the area, and we incorporate streets as we go. We primarily try to balance the approach each year throughout the city. Because if we don't, we'll get calls from, why did you go over there and not over here? So we try to balance the program throughout the city as the best we can. We do have, in our planning purposes, multiple little districts around the city that we try to focus on to use that balance. Until this year, we've been doing this program manually with basic programs, Excel, et cetera, to manage the program, identify which streets need improving. And we haven't had a real technical review of the streets that pavement quality index reset in about a four to five years. So it's time to do a major reevaluation. And it's timely because we're moving into a computerized software that will be able to track the streets. Indexes much easier than our manual methods. It'll also help us evaluate the program as a whole. If we spend this much money on preservation versus rehabilitation, we can raise the overall rank, uh, street rating for the whole city by X points, which helps us evaluate and keep our streets in a good condition. That's coming. What is pavement preservation? Well, pavement preservation, it has a number of elements to it. Everything from crack sealing, which is the paint or goo that you see that's on the ground in various patterns. We don't intentionally make a pattern, but it's just following the cracks, mostly done by our streets maintenance group. On streets that are part of the pavement preservation program, we do crack sealing as part of that process as well. And we're looking to incorporate the citywide crack seal program possibly into the pavement preservation to have a better bang for the buck. When we do larger projects, we can have a better cost comparison for that element. Then there's also pavement rejuvenators. It's basically on new pavement, it's, the way I've characterized it a little bit, it's like putting hand lotion on. It keeps it flexible. Another element of pavement preservation is a slurry coat. And there's various types of slurry coats, fog seals, slurries. It's basically how thick the oil is. It's kind of like painting a building. It looks nicer. It kind of holds it together a little bit. Then there's various chip seals, rubberized, conventional chip seals. And that's like restuccoing your house. It makes it a better surface for wearing. And then the last level of pavement preservation before we go into rehabilitation is something called micro-surfacing, which is like stuccoing and painting. It really makes a very solid, durable surface that will extend the life of the pavement for a number of years. So that's what's included in the pavement preservation concepts. As far as the program, we have a goal to start the work out to bed in June. When council approves the budget, we start work in July and allow them to work from July to June. Because some of these products have temperature sensitivities. We're working on streets, sometimes there's streets that need to be done at night. So we look at trying to give the contractor enough time and ability to not only give us a good price, but to get the work done in the most efficient manner. We've been behind this year. Here we are in April and we're just coming to you now. We're catching up. We're going to be putting out next year's program a little bit later than we, what we'd like to. But by August, we should be back before you with next year's program. And then for FY20, we'll be on schedule. Especially with the computers, uh, program, we should be able to catch up and get on track again. Now specifically, or one more thing before we get too far. This isn't showing up, sorry. But as you can clearly see, we do a lot of the streets. Do you want to try the other one? Yeah. Okay. Well, we had a very nice graphic to show. You want to try the other one? That should work. Yeah, when we cover the whole city in one graphic, it gets real tiny. What this shows are basically our road system in three different colors essentially, red, green, and black. Since we started formally with our pavement program in 2007, the green streets are what we've addressed in, in some way, shape, or form with one of these or multiple of these pavement preservation techniques. The red streets, which are... Thank you. Mark is wonderful. We have a street in this area, we have some streets here along, I believe that's Miller Valley and Fair. We have some streets in this neighborhood, in the Demers area, along Rossar, moving up into Willow Lake Road area. And then out into Center Point, East and West, the airpark. And then we're also a part of the program, doing some work up at the airport jointly with the airport and funding to improve some of the taxiways. So that's a real quick walk through the current program. We did prepare the plans for this project in-house. And we did have the project bid in two consecutive weeks in March. We did receive two bids. And it was right at the engineer's estimate. We have verified and have worked with VSS in the past and are recommending that the low bid amount of 2.59 million be approved today. Pending award today, we'll be working with them to get the notice to proceed in about two weeks and then having them complete the work by the end of June and get it caught up. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Councilman Good?
Oh, I just want to say it's about time. When you're dealing with so many variables, on conditions of your streets, the degree of degradation, the cost of these various remediation programs, et cetera, having a computer program to manage this for you is just, it's mind-boggling that you were still doing it manually. Reminded me back in the 80s when I was doing some of my first budgeting for my business groups, and when I got a copy of Lotus 123, I thought I'd died and gone to heaven.
Yes, I remember that.
So, you know, to finally have this computerized so you can establish your criteria, and I'd like to see some of these lists publicly posted so neighborhoods and communities will understand where they stand and when their streets are going to be addressed so that we have a little more support and cooperation, and we can get these projects completed. So, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is quite the undertaking.
Other questions, comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor. I move to approve city contract number 2018-193.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you, Steve.
Great, thank you.
Let's move on to item 11E.
Approval to purchase two fire engine trucks from Rosenbauer South Dakota LLC.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We are requesting authorization to replace two fire, or to purchase two new fire engine trucks to replace vehicles 1056 and 1057. The purchases will include two new Rosenbauer chassis, pumper apparatus bodies, and includes all the necessary upfittings. So this is a turnkey, out-the-door, upgraded unit. The purchase will be made using the National Joint Powers Alliance contract, which will ensure the best possible pricing for the city of Prescott. The units we're replacing are both 15 years old, and they have 160,000 miles on one and 184,000 on the other. They're becoming unreliable for emergency operations. Just from July 1st of 2016 until April 1st of 2018, we had 26 down days, days where they were mechanically unavailable for use, at a cost of $68,000 over that period of time, which was just a little over a year. Fleet services and the Fire Department initially looked at refurbishing the existing trucks and rebuilding most components, however, the cost became prohibitive because a lot of the units, or a lot of the chassis would not be upgraded, transmission would not be upgraded, and some of the other things. So we rerouted, went back, and got the quote from Rosenbauer. The refurbishment also would have extended the life of the units eight years, whereas the new units will be 14 years of service life. The proposed purchase was brought to the FAB board, that's the Fleet Asset Review Board that the city has, representatives from different departments that discuss all of the fleet purchases for the city of Prescott. It was discussed and approved at that meeting. The interesting thing about this is the NJPA contract that we're using for this will expire at midnight tonight, and the contract minister had told us that the expected increase for the next contract will be 10 to 15 percent, and I'm sure based partly on the price of steel and things like that. And so, in closing, the vehicles, 1056 and 1057, will be surplus at auction, once their replacements are put into service, and $525,658 payment for the vehicle chassis will be made in fiscal year '18, when they are received by Rosenbauer, and the remaining $529,496 will be paid in fiscal year '19, when the city takes delivery of the completed vehicles. The FY '18 payment will come out of the last available funds in the Vehicle Replacement Fund, and then the FY '19 payment will come out of the General Fund. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, or I have Chief Light, as well as Mike Carr, our fleet manager.
Thank you, Joe. Councilman Blair?
When you put those fire trucks out to pasture, what do you expect to receive from them, understanding it's an auction, but you have a rough amount? We've done this before, and how much would that be? And will it go back into the General Fund?
Honestly, don't have an idea at this point. Value is based on demand, so depending on the condition they're in when we retire them, and then what else is available on the market at the time, if somebody's looking for a unit to refurbish, I'd say a low estimate would be between $50,000 to $60,000 per unit, and that cost would go back towards the General Fund.
You should get plenty of money for them to get washed enough.
Yeah.
Well, as you know, I'm very, very, very protective of our General Fund revenues, but essential services are what that General Fund should be primarily used for. Joe, you and I talked about this. This is a situation where these trucks have been run through their lifetime plus, and looking at the alternatives of possibly refurbishing new chassis and doing something other than a new purchase, I think were pretty thoroughly investigated, and in this case, I think you've made the best decision. So I will certainly support this for the Fire Department. Thanks.
Other questions, comments? Entertain a motion?
Mayor. Move, we move to approve city contract number 2018-212.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you, Joe. I guess we find out, well, we all know you're Man of the Year, but we'll find out officially if Prescott area leadership feels that you're the Man of the Year, so good luck on that. We'll be pulling for you. All right, let's move on to item 11F.
Approval of the Airport Advisory Board recommendation to the Department of Transportation for a replacement EAS interim air service provider at Prescott Municipal Airport, PRC.
You have been one busy lady.
Lot can happen in 14 days.
Yes, thank you for being here, Robin Sabata.
Mayor, Council, I'm here because, obviously, we lost Great Lakes Airlines AC Service on March 26th, and then an emergency RFP was issued by the Department of Transportation the next day. We've been in contact with the Department of Transportation over the last several days as the first part of that RFP closed on April 3rd. There were actually three elements associated with this RFP. The first one was there was emergency service to Page, because Page was also affected by this. The second is that there was an interim bid enclosed in it, which is basically a bid for essentially the rest of the contract term for Great Lakes Airlines. And the third one is a longer-term bid. They were all due to close on April 3rd, but we did request a 90-day extension on the two-year bid because of factors at the airport and extra time that we needed for that bid to process. That 90-day extension on the long-term bid was granted, so by July 2nd, we will have another set of bids for the longer-term proposal, so this is the interim proposal that I'm discussing right now. So we received three interim bids. The DOT forwarded them to us all by October, I'm sorry, April 5th, and due to the good work and support of our Airport Advisory Board, we were able to have a meeting on April 7th, and thank you Chairman Giuliani for leading that, and Vice Chair Foote for that help. So at that meeting, we did review some of the proposals, and I just wanted to briefly go over those proposals for you, so you know what we covered. The evaluation criteria for the proposals I'll cover, looked at routes, frequency. In terms of aircraft type and characteristics, we were looking at whether or not the aircraft was pressurized, in some cases, the age of the fleet. We were particularly concerned with reliability, that's a huge issue for the community, and so we actually specifically asked each of the carriers what their maintenance plans were. We looked at their average fare, and of course, that varied by route, and their ability to meet our strategic goals. And I think it's real important to understand that one of our strategic goals is to hit 10,000 enplanements annually. That goal is to help us get the 1 million in entitlements that airports who have more than 10,000 enplanements got are entitled to by the FAA. Right now, our entitlement is only 150,000 a year. And then the last thing we looked at is the likelihood of approval from the Department of Transportation. Some of the bids were quite high, and as a result, we tried to keep it within what we perceived to be their range. And just to give you a background on that, the average EAS bid is about 2.5 million per year. You'll find some proposals in there that were approved in the 3 million or 4 million range, rarely in the 5 million. So we were cognizant of that, and we thought about that, and which one we moved forward to recommend. So here's the first proposer, this is Boutique Air. They actually proposed two aircraft. One was the King Air 350, and the other was the Pilatus. They put in two different proposals for, one was for 36 seats and one was for more, and that's 36, I should say, round trips a day that we were looking at. Correction, I'm sorry. Excuse me, 36 round trips a week. That would be essentially four to LA and two to Phoenix daily is what we're reviewing. The aircraft that we're suggesting for that is the Pilatus PC-12. You can see a picture of it in the top right corner, it's a single-engine aircraft. It's got eight seats plus a lav, and it is pressurized, and that's actually important for passenger comfort. If anybody's been in a non-pressurized aircraft, the higher you get, the more your ears pop. Also, pressurization is helpful because you can go around weather, and we all know with the monsoon season approaching, we want the aircraft to be able to climb over weather, so that's an important factor. Boutique also had interline capabilities with United Airlines, and they're looking at a code share in the near future, so we think that's a good match for our community. High reliability at 97.7 percent. So that bid is looking at about 4.3 million, and to clarify, that's essentially a gift to the Prescott community, because what that is, is that's the Department of Transportation saying, "This is what we want to contribute, so you have essential air service." The previous bid with Great Lakes was only 2.79, so this is a significant step forward if they do approve this. And with the frequency of flights and the total number of seats, we do believe we can meet our enplanement strategic goals with this particular provider. The second provider was Advanced Air. They want to fly King Air 350s with twins. The twin is something that you're guaranteed a right to have under essential air service, but the reality is, they are more expensive to operate, so they did bid less frequency. And they also did two different options, one were daily trips to Hawthorne, California, that'd be two trips a day, or one to Hawthorne and two to Phoenix. What's interesting is all the bidders did put in bids for Phoenix, and so this is going to be a new space that we're going to be entering, that we haven't been in about 10 years. They reported 100 percent reliability. They didn't have code share or interline agreements, and our concern was that their goal was to go into fixed-based operators at both Hawthorne and at Phoenix, which meant then there would be a shuttle ride from there or a limo ride back to the large or medium hub airport to which we're entitled to go as a community under essential air service. Also, the numbers they put in could not meet our enplanement goals, so we were concerned we'd be stuck in what I call the, you know, the non-primary service airport trap, where you will continue to only get the 150,000 a year. The next bidder is Mokalele Airlines. They want to fly Cessna caravans, single-engine aircraft, eight seats or nine seats, depending on the configuration, and they're non-pressurized. Again, the pressurization is an issue. 21 non-stop round trips a week. They're looking at Phoenix and LA. 98 percent reliability, which is good, and they had an interline agreement with Alaska. And the other thing is, that's notable, is they do have a local pilot pathway program with North Air on our airport. Their bid was roughly 1.5 million, which makes it look really attractive, but the reason it's attractive is because it's so many fewer flights a day and per week as well. And we also saw that they could not meet our enplanement goals. So the Airport Board met, and based on staff recommendation, they concurred with the recommendation. It is for Boutique Airlines, 36 round trip week, per week option with the Pilatus PC-12. This will require that we write a letter indicating that we are supportive of the fact that for that particular platform of PC-12, we are willing to go to single-engine service instead of twin service, so we will have to write a letter to that effect. They'll give us the routes to Phoenix and LA. They give us the frequency that we're looking for as a community. We talked to them specifically about reliability because of our previous concerns with the prior carrier. They indicate that they will probably be setting up a maintenance facility here with three to five workers, so that's a big part of why we felt supportive of their proposal. They do have the United Agreement, the pressurized aircraft, and we do feel we can meet the enplanement goal. So ultimately, that's what we decided.
Sold.
Well, first, I want to thank you and your team and the committee for your work in expediting this. It's not good to be without service. Great Lakes pulled the rug out from under us, as we all know. And so I appreciate all the effort that you've made with Department of Transportation, among others, and thank you. Thank you for putting all this together. It's very important to us to have air service, so thank you. Questions, comments from the Council? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the Airport Advisory Board recommendation to the Department of Transportation for a replacement assessional air service, EAS interim air service provider at Prescott Municipal Airport, PRC.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right, thank you, Robin. Let's move on to item 11G, and hear a brief legislative update from Tyler Goodman.
I completely understand.
And I agree, I agree with you in that word, "brief."
You notice I emphasize that. A week from today should be the end of the legislative session, although that's yet to be seen, depending on how the budget goes. We're expecting to see a lot more talks on the budget this upcoming week. Something that we wanted to let you know of, from a couple of bills, there will now be a referendum on this November's ballot, dealing with the elected officials' retirement plan and the corrections officers' retirement plan, and these are going to go through similar reforms that PSPRS went through a couple years ago through Prop 124, switching from the PBI, the permanent benefit increase, to the cost-of-living adjustment. The Board of Trustees for PSPRS is totally for this, and so you're going to see that on the ballot this fall. Also, I wanted to let you know, House Bill 2097, the pension funding policies, was signed by the governor a week ago, and so we're going to be working on that, get that in place. Going through real quickly...
Hang on, Tyler, excuse me.
Yes.
Councilman Lamerson, now you wanted him to be brief, and now you're slowing him down.
I did, but the matter is, you didn't clarify that while our city elected officials do not have a retirement plan, that's part of that deal.
Correct.
I don't want the public out there thinking we're all up here chewing off at the trough, you know what I mean?
I'm sorry I failed to mention that, and that is true.
Thank you.
The PTSD workers' comp bill that I talked a lot about last week, that's going through the process. It will be heard on the floor of the Senate this week. The sober living home bill has now passed both chambers, and after speaking with Councilman Good, we're now in contact with the Arizona Department of Health Services, looking to get involved in the rulemaking process that they're going to be moving forward with. So we're going to be really involved in that. The patient brokering bill is also waiting for the governor's signature, and the consolidated election dates. As of my update, when I printed it, I hadn't heard yet, but since then, it did pass the Senate 17 to 11, so that will also go to the governor. And the flight hour requirements waiver, again, has passed both chambers. It went to the Secretary of State to get distributed to the President of the United States, Speaker of the House at the congressional level, and all Congress members, and we'll be receiving a certified, sealed, stamped copy of that from the Secretary of State in just a few days. Besides that, just a couple of other highlights at the bottom there. Senate Bill 1382, the Vacation Rental, TPT, all online providers for vacation rentals, remitting and collecting sales tax. That has passed and is going to be going to the governor's desk shortly, as well as the CFD Directors Bill, that's also going to the governor. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Good?
Well, I just want to thank Tyler, your efforts, especially on HCM 2005, the 1,500-hour rule, along with our lobbyist, Barry Errands. We've been working on this bill to get the state, along with the governor, to support this potential reduction and/or waiver, so that we can try to solve this growing problem with commercial airline pilots and the shortage that this rule has generated. And of course, we knew that Great Lakes Airlines even referenced their pilot shortage as a reason for their discontinuation of service, so the timing is certainly appropriate, although it's going to take a lot more effort... it's going to take a lot more effort to see if we can get some relief on the federal level. So I want to thank you for that. We've achieved the first hurdle, and I've been able to get two national organizations to support this effort, with now about 125 airport executives supporting it, and we even have one analysis that breaks down the airports that are at the highest risk based upon their congressional districts. So we can now take this, move it forward, send it to those Congress people in those districts, and see if we can ultimately get some relief here, because it's going to continue to be a problem. But I think with Boutique Airlines having their own kind of pilot training program, it shouldn't be as much of an issue, at least in the short term or the interim term. But we're certainly going to need relief at the national level because it's going to affect every airline regardless of size. So thank you for your efforts, and please pass my congratulations and thank you along to Barry. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Tyler? Good job, Tyler.
Thank you.
Good report. Thank you. I'd like to leave you with a quote from President John F. Kennedy, and I quote, "Let every nation know, whether it wishes us will or ill, that we shall pay any price, bear any burden, meet any hardship, support any friend, oppose any foe, to assure the survival and the success of liberty." This meeting is adjourned.